Good evening, it's time to call this meeting in order Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, Mason County Board of Education, regular business meeting, Agenda number twenty-five dash zero five. Here at the Mason County Board of Education offices six P M., we have four members present with Mr. Shove on the phone. At this time, we'll stand for pledge led by Mr. Burkes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, delegations, we have none. Reports, four of one, Roosevelt Elementary Project, Christian Riviera McKinley Architecture and Engineering. Christian?
Alrighty, um, first I want to thank you guys for having me. Excited about this project, excited about Mason County General. Uh, I have a couple of friends from here, so it was very exciting when I got transferred into this project. So, first I'll just go by explain all the documents I gave you, and then once I explain them, I'll go through them and explain them in further detail. But the first three documents that are only eight and a half by eleven is our three different estimates. The first estimate that just says schematic design estimate was our S D A S D submittal estimate, so that was something we presented to them for our S D submission. The second one with the highlight in yellow, that's schematic design estimate new layout. That is for the layout I proposed, what we proposed as McKinley Architecture to Superintendent Farmer moving the classrooms to the outside, to the northwest portion of the campus. And then the last one is just combined estimate of the two, so you can see a comparables right next to each other. You'll see at the top, conference square foot, the totals and the updated totals, the two totals are combined. And then on the larger eleven by seventeen, the first two sheets is the site plan as well as the floor layout plan that we submitted to the S B A for our S D submittal. The next two sheets are from the original needs application. The next one is or was a proposed layout, moving the elevator during the corridor as well. And then lastly is the updated layout where the reworking of the interiors of those four classrooms as well as the classroom off to that northeast portion of the building. So that's just quick walk through the drawings and I'm going toward the detailed use of the map. So, this all started after we submitted these drawings to our S, to the S B A for our S D submittals. So we'll start with the site plan. So this was our current layout after discussing with Cam as well as Superintendent Farmer of moving that addition from where it was in the original need submission to the front of the building. And this plan was proposed because there was a lot of access, a lot of flat land. It was an easy addition to the building at first thought, but one of the issues that we saw with this was it was reducing your guys' parking for that school. We were losing up nine spots and trying to relocate those nine spots became a challenge and that's something that we wanted to bring out and let you guys know. As well as just, you look at the next plan. If you look at classroom three oh five in the northeast corner of the plan. Something that Department of Ed brought up to us is moving the elevator over to that portion of the building, because it currently was inside, I'll explain that a little bit further. Well, we moved that elevator to the outside of the building in that northeast corridor. But the Department of Ed's biggest concern with that and moving the elevator up there is we had to create that corridor for that classroom, that brought the total square footage for that classroom down to the allowable amount for a traditional classroom. It was brought from about six ninety-eight square feet to five seventy as you see there, and the minimum standard for the Department of Ed was six thirty. So moving the elevator there wasn't a viable option. So that is where we stood, and this is where a lot of these changes started to come about, and then I'll explain now the original need submissions and what was the thought there, and we'll go through the rest of these changes. So with the Google Earth floor, you know, floor plan picture, you will see that the original plan was to put that two classroom addition with the corridor on the outside of the building, on the west wing of that side. And this was something that was proposed as a potential solution without a lot of detail into it. This was something that we just submit to the S B A's needs, and it is a rough project narrative as well as an estimate. There wasn't further detail, and we get to that further detail once you work through the project as we're doing currently right now. But some of the woes with this plan was if you move over to that next side or that next slide, next piece of paper. You'll see on A one oh two, moving that two classroom addition, we modified it, presented that as option two, as we presented five options that Superintendent Farmer in the past was. Moving that two classroom addition out there would create some complications as there is a road where that classroom would be dicking up, so you would have no pure access going to your sewerage plant. There's a sewerage treatment plant on the backside of that school, so adding that two classroom addition there would block off that road and create no access into there. There's quite the potential of building a road going down that depressed land, if you guys are familiar with the site that is that grassy land off to that, um, west side of the campus. But creating that road can create some more problems when it comes to there is that overhead electric, if you guys are familiar with that as well, and there's underground electric running on that pathway to rear of the school. So, and then additionally, with the inside of the building, we would be taking a classroom through the gymnasium, as that double door is the gymnasium. Getting those classrooms, we thought that wasn't a viable option, and we believe that we presented that to Superintendent Farmer, that wasn't a viable option, that's why we pivoted from the original need submission. And then if you remember when we talked about, the biggest worry that Department of Ed had was the corridor in classroom three oh five. Putting that corridor there reduced that total square footage for that classroom to five seventy, so we ended up doing a very funky shape just to show what it would be like to maintain the correct amount of square footage for all those classrooms with the corridor, so we could show what it would be like to put the elevator out to that side of the building. And while we're on this topic, the reasoning for moving the elevator from the inside of the building to the outside of the building is, you'll see right in the center of those four classrooms, three small dots, those are all columns. So the goal was potentially to put the elevator with those columns, and after further investigation with our structural engineer, with modifying those columns and then breaking through each of that first and second floor, without existing grounds, could create a lot of unknowns in the construction process. So even estimating that from, uh, from an architecture engineering standpoint as well as a contractor standpoint, there's a lot of unknowns with that. So we didn't think it was a viable option, potentially put that elevator in there after further investigation, looking at site, popping in, there's a hard ceiling there, there's no way to see when it's there. So that's why we ended up moving that elevator from the interior of the school to the exterior, because building on the exterior of the school would allow for an easier addition. Rather than demoing and constructing, we would just be constructing with building that elevator on the outside of the school. So that was one of the main reasons why we shifted from the interior of the building to the exterior of the building. And then I'll move on to the last sheet, A five oh two. This is our proposed plan on the new layout that we believe solves a lot of your schools' problems. And it is moving that two classroom from the front of the school where we create a lot of transportation woes and a lot of issue when it comes to parking, and moving it over into that northeast side of campus. And as you can see, we are also doing a little bit of renovation in the interior of the school, as all those classrooms have just stud walls, so those can be easily demoed and relocated to create a corridor that aligns with these columns, so that we create that corridor, increase classroom space to the traditional seven twenty size, because currently they are undersized at six ninety-eight, as well as move the classroom to the outside and the elevator to the outside. And this also allows for, I know with the coming of new core and five L, the population goes this ever-growing, a great time to give what's beginning for increased enrollment, that also provides you guys with a future expansion option where if you need to know the two classroom in the future, it fits into that slot right there seamlessly. So, those are the plans, and I'll kind of talk through the estimate now as well in further detail to explain it. So like I said, the first estimate was the S D submittal, so that would be the traditional package, which is the first layout that we went over. That was ultimately to keep you guys under cost for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All encompassing, but that does not include the rework, potentially for the elevator going the exterior, and then reducing that classroom size to equal the Department of Ed's non-negotiables on classroom sizes. The next estimate, like I said, the schematic design estimate new layout, is the estimate for Plan A five oh two. And I've highlighted the key areas of where the cost increases are with that project. So in Division nine, it's highlighted for an increased cost of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and that is mostly with the renovation on the interior of the school, removing those stud walls, repurposing those, creating new spaces, bigger spaces for your students to have. So that is one, one of the cost increases, as well as the electrical. As you take down stud walls, there are outlets to them, there's lights in them, there's switches in them. So as, as you take down those stud walls, you're going to have to replace the switches, lights outlets as well, so that's why you see an increase in your electrical as well. And then the last cost, major cost increase that we see would be earthwork utilities and site improvement, and that is because on that far side, there is just some more grass here compared to the front of the school where there is pavement. And then the last estimate, like I said, is the comparable cost, and you can see using the comparable cost by moving from the original S D submission we had, which was sixty thousand dollars for your finishes, you increase it to two hundred and eleven thousand, which like I said is mostly on the interior of that, you can see building with demoing those stud walls, and then reconstructing them to create bigger, larger spaces, as well as the floor for the electric elevator. And like I said, the increase in electrical goes from eighty thousand to eleven, and then the earthwork from forty to seventy-four. So that is pretty much all encompassing of where we stand, what we had to do when, in regards to the S B A and Department of Ed, and what the proposed solution we have to, all of those problems that were questions we have from the Department of Ed. And the major complication was then the budget increase. Uh, this would then put you guys over budget a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Compared to your original of under budget, a hundred and eighty-four. Is there any direct questions?
Yes, so for most, what are you asking, we need to come up with a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to get this project completed, is that what you're saying?
Uh, there is, there is still some other solutions that we could explore, but we believe that this, proposing this option on that northwest portion of the school would provide you with future growth, easily future growth, as we, as we know that new course coming along, the D L E is coming along, enrollment is definitely is an increase. So this would be the best solution to keep in mind the future, not just solve the current need.
So if you look, there's monthly funding, so that would be our part, and then we would have to contribute the, or, over budget, seventy, so it would be around four hundred exactly.
Yes, you guys are committing two hundred and forty-one thousand based on the grant, and then the additional over budget costs would have to be assumed by the county. So Superintendent Farmer's, right, they'd be all, right around four hundred thousand dollars, estimating.
Now, if we're able to go through this, is there a timeframe that we have any idea of this, man, that this is, went on and on, it seems like we get hit up a lot about it. Would it be pretty quick to start next year, or how would this work?
So our, our original goal was to have this need bid at the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Obviously, we had a little bit of days, probably a month, a month and a half, and the ladies were just going back and forth, Superintendent Farmer going back and forth with the Department of Ed. I think our original goal would be to bid March twenty twenty-six. With the goal of that A five oh two, with us doing the work in the interior of the school, having that work completed before school starts, so you could still construct your addition to the building throughout that twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year, but making sure that we phase the interior work for the summer get it done, so it doesn't affect your guys' school calendar year.
Any plans?
Uh, yeah, I'm just looking, I mean, I'm never good with floor plans, but just so we're clear, I think there are probably some staff members from that school watching. This proposed plan puts us at the, if I'm looking at the front of Roosevelt, toward the far right, that area that kind of goes down over the hill.
Yes, yeah, like.
So that was the area I thought we first picked when we first met last summer, but we were told that something with the ground and getting equipment in there and all of that, that was the least feasible option, as we were put last June. So I'm just a little confused, I guess, how now we're back here, this is the most feasible.
Well, we have, we've had a switch in architects, and so with the front of the building was the parking lot, so.
Right.
Once Christian came on, we had talked about moving dirt, extend the parking lot, um, we're going to lose nine spaces up front, so we know we're going to have to extend that parking lot. And then there's some issues, correct me if I'm wrong, with the roof when you're.
Yes.
Addition to the front, there's some issues, and so all of that's going to increase cost. So the elevator as well, we were thinking the elevator was going to go on the inside at that time. The elevator can't go on the inside, so the elevator has to go to the exterior. So when you're thinking, when, they're trying to look at the least invasive way and the best way to get these two classrooms and the elevator, because we had to scrap, you put the two classrooms up front, you still have to put the elevator on the exterior of the building somewhere, so.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I was on the same, because I remember.
Well, you were.
That location was our first choice. And the out front was like our, that was our second best option, because on the end wasn't going to work because of the dirt, the ground, the getting in there.
Yes.
Things like that, so I was just wondering how, I guess, we got back to, this is what we actually decided last, what, June? Okay, so, so if none of that's an issue now, then I get, like, as far as getting, right?
Yeah, that being said, it's a concern, that's probably one of our major concerns, that is the construction entrance.
Mm-hmm.
But we've worked with our civil engineer, it would come right on the rear side of the playground going down the hill into there, but with that construction, if you move it to the front, it would intimidate your school in a lot of other ways.
All under control.
So I think it's almost, lack of better terms, I think, being the lesser of the evils. This is one of, interesting school where you have squat one elevation on one side, and then a different elevation on one side of the site, shifting in all different directions. So that was a concern, and I think revisiting it, especially with Department of Ed's concerns with having that corridor in that classroom and reducing that classroom space, there would really be a no question right this game there. So it's going to be gaining two classrooms in front of the school, but then you're also going to lose technically two classrooms on the rear of your school. So this opens up the rear with all those corridors, gives each classroom more space on the first and second floor, as well as maybe the classroom on that side. Just very true academically.
Yeah, I mean, I like that location, I just want to make sure, I just felt like we were told there were reasons we couldn't have it there, so I was confused.
Do you have?
Yes, for sure.
What did all my best cousins say, what they said was parts of the old school was buried back there, and none of the ground was stable enough, that was a problem with the ground.
Right, that's why we're going to use that location.
I, we are, well.
That, 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 that smart looked into that, but that's what they told us, where the, parts of foundation, parts of this building was buried back there, filled dirt stuff that made them unstable enough.
So we have, so they have looked at every avenue before going back there, because like you said, every, every option, we're running into so many issues. Um, because there's no perfect way, um, because you need a two-stop elevator, and if you're going to put it on the exterior, it's going to consume somebody's space on the inside. So, um, we have explored, he gave us five options, and all of those options have been explored to the point now we're back to the original line. Like he said, putting it out front, it was solid ground, because there was issues and concerns about us being out back. Um, there's not a lot of room back there to even get equipment, um, access back there is limited. Uh, so there's been so many just back and forth, um, where is the best option, because of the logistics of the school, and then like I said, the elevator, the original plan was put inside the building, and that was going to be okay, but that's not even an option for us, so, go ahead, no.
One thing to add, and I think that's your, her concern, I think that's Dale on the phone.
Yes.
His concern is soil compaction, something that we didn't do, just because we have our clearing checks, we, we do want to nail down a plan as a geotech report doing soil warrants, and that will then let us know they're going to drill about eighteen inches into the ground even further, usually about four feet, to then understand what kind of soil is in there, because that will tell you if that ground. I don't believe in the practice we did geotech warrants for that location.
I don't think they did that, I think because we found out, you know, old foundation was buried there from the original school, things like that, and so it was, this was our first choice, but it was written off because of that ground and what was underneath it.
Yeah.
So I just was trying to make sure, or I guess understand how that wasn't an issue.
And getting, getting clearance before, that's something that we'll investigate, because that is part of the design process, is understanding what's there, and those geotech will determine what kind of foundation need, but they also, you know, if that air is even structural enough, but that's something we haven't done, because that's something that would incur cost, and we didn't want to be.
Yeah, and that's something, we know the cost is going up, so the elevator is really the only option, if you look at what the old figures have, the only option truly is to put it behind the school. Because you can't, the W P D E has already stopped the one where it was going to go in by the stairwell, they don't want that to happen, because they're going to consume classroom square footage. So now the elevator, there's really no other option but to put it in the exterior out back. Because you can't put it inside the building like it was originally planned, and you can't put it to the side where the stairwell is, and you can't get to the other side of the building to do anything, because logistically, the way the building sits.
So what happens if you do run into some problem, then what do we do?
That'd be something I'd tackle, yeah, so that is, that is true.
What are the other plans that is, I do?
Tackle another four hundred?
I guess that's my question too, we're looking at, so we are now short one seventy, what are we looking at, I mean, for that, and then do we need to figure out where that extra one seventy is coming from to get the green light, to do the geotech?
Well, the geotech would be, we could definitely do the geotech for not a hundred seventy, the geotech would probably be about fifteen thousand dollars. So we could definitely do those steps before we keep getting further and further into the design, because right now we would then be quote-unquote restarting, going back to the drawing table, re-engaging with our civil, doing those geotech warrants to understand if that is still in front of the site, but based on our current civil, we believe it is.
Now, that's something McKinley will cover.
The geotech, usually that's on our, on our, our cost.
It's listed here under the soft cost for eleven.
Yeah. Yes, so.
So is it eleven or fifteen?
It's an allowance, depending on how many geo, if, if we do three, it's typically for an addition, you would see two or three. If those who come back here, we'll probably do additional ones, and that would increase the cost to confirm that.
Okay. Estimated fifty?
Yeah, that's an allowance.
Mr. Shove, anything else, or did you?
Yeah, I'll answer.
Okay.
So, I mean, what does it need to do to get this rolling, or need to figure out where the extra almost two hundred is coming from, or what's our, is that here?
Yes, and, uh, you know, I think the point is that we want to move forward, I think that's a decision we have to make, and it sounds like to, do, um, I mean, moving forward, geotech, go ahead, love it, then do the soil testing, see what that comes back as. My biggest concern is if it doesn't pass. You know, the elevator, where do we put the elevator then? Can we still put the elevator out back and move to the original, like, put the classrooms up front? Go to the side to the original plan, and still put the elevator out back?
I think the best thing, if that option still doesn't work, would be, would be to go back out front, but I think it would cause a lot of interior renovations to that side of the building, because that is our main concern, is when you put it, when you are putting this elevator off that northeast portion of the building, you create a weird looking corridor. If you go back to A one oh one, that was the option on building a ninety-degree corridor, and you would see that classroom three oh five, that would be trying to minimize all of the interior, but we could definitely get creative on building stud walls, building new walls, to create a real academic base rather than three oh five being a random layout. So, we could get more creative when it comes to that, and that is still a possibility, but as you can see, there is, there's still a lot of intensive interior work, if we were to keep that elevator there without the addition being there as well.
That's something we used to use. Alright, thanks. Christian, we thank you, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you. And if there's any questions that come out of your board and after you get in there, I'm always happy to answer them, you have, well, it's a farmer, and then she'll relay those to me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, forward to instructional updates, curriculum department, Mr. Rames.
Thank you, we're in good, pleasure to always be able to address the board's education, just have a few brief little items here, uh, to discuss this evening. First of all, when I came aboard, uh, last month, our high schools were in the midst of, uh, prep recovery programs in their sites. Uh, happy to say that, uh, there were a total of thirty-eight students who passed forty-eight courses over the summer to help them get back on track to graduate. Uh, item number two is, uh, virtual instruction, and this year we had twenty-two students who enrolled in our county virtual program, ranging from grades one through eleven. Proximity is the name of the virtual program service that we are again using this year. Uh, I was not familiar with it, uh, until I took this job last month, but I will say, just from the design of it, um, it looks to me like a very solid program. I like it because it, uh, makes kids uh, maintain a rigid schedule of attending classes at the same times every day, Monday through Friday, just like, uh, if they were in physical buildings. So it's not kind of like a, a free-for-all or anything like that, it is a very rigid schedule for these kids, and it keeps them in a routine. Uh, finally, the eye-ready, uh, beginning of the year diagnostic window opened yesterday. It runs through September fifth, and, uh, I should say that kindergarten, uh, they have not started yet. That will begin for them in the coming days, but, uh, this will supply us with, uh, what we think will be a solid, uh, beginning of the year benchmark, um, so that we can, uh, of course, look at places, uh, within our academic programs where we need, uh, growth in different subjects and grade levels. And finally, the last thing is, uh, when talking to the secondary principals, uh, here in the last few days, they have said that, uh, they feel like they have gotten off to great starts at their respective schools this year, and, um, I think they have really good attitudes about starting the school year. And, uh, to me, that's, that's a great start to any school year, when you can get, uh, positive vibes like that. Any questions?
I want to hear about that, no, but we thank you for dropping your warning, we look forward to many more of these.
Alright, appreciate it.
Four oh three, updates from the superintendent?
I give you guys an enrollment, uh, Mrs. Hall had prepared this spreadsheet for you. If you look at the top, you have the O, that was the beginning of the school year last year, the end of the school year, um, and then the beginning of the year this year, you can see the enrollment numbers to the right. We have some schools that have went up, seeing an increase in enrollment. And then we, we're looking at right now, um, thirty-five twenty-five is where we sit with enrollment right now. So the past few years, we have been trending, um, losing more enrollment, this year we're, seems like we've, you know, we have, on an average, we lost about a hundred students over the past two or three years. So the past few years, we have been trending, um, losing more enrollment this year where it seems like we've, you know, we have, on an average, we lost about a hundred students over the past two or three years. This past year, we did not see that big of a decrease.
Not to interrupt you, but where we had on the hope and the homeschooling numbers.
I have those, do you have exactly how many that we had, Rachel?
I do not have the exact count, we've had several homeschool students who have enrolled in, back into public school. Um, so I think our last count was in the three hundred.
It was.
And it's probably down just a little bit.
We had a combination, I would say like three twenty for, with hope and homeschool, um. Has school started last week?
Go ahead, do you have a question? But do we have a number, I mean, just out of curiosity of like the adult program or how many we finished with last year? And then adult programs, I know at one point, they, uh, we were all wishing, uh, to be.
Let's see, so at the career center, come out our adult programs, so Mr. Ritter said, did you say we had like, how many last year?
Sixty students total last year.
Okay.
We already have more than thirty students signed up for the first batch this year. So we are on track to triple that.
Awesome, so last year we talked, we had what, eleven? Did you mention eleven?
We had eleven to start the year last year.
We have thirty. So just, we got school started, just normal, um, things since the beginning of the year, um. But we are, you know, our schools are up and running, we've had a few issues with some of our buildings, um. Mr. Montes already started his walkthroughs, got some correspondence today, um, so we're just, we've been looking for, Mr. Rains said, I think four fifteen.
All right, thank you, four oh four, financial report, Mr. Charles Fish.
I've got the hand up in front of me there, we've got the, the budget transfer, budget supplements and budget carryover. Um, they're very small right now, because we're just, we're still rolling over to get all the expenditures from the last year in, so we can do to get, uh, finish up the financial statements. Uh, but once we get those, uh, expenditures never hanging in, uh, we'll, uh, decently increase next month. The first one there, there's a budget transfer, um, there's quite a few there that, uh, went and rolled over. It, it put it into the wrong code, it should have been like, some of them should have been like O O one, it rolled over, put it in O O two, or, or, O O O. Then there was adjustment there and moved into the correct, uh, location code. Uh, that's what, that's what majority of those, uh, internal transfers are, is just moving into the correct location code. Uh, the budget supplements, um, there's been several, uh, uh, grants there that's coming in, we want to be able to have and put them in to get them started. Um, there was, uh, on that last one there, there's a government office, they had the government office approved, uh, Point Pleasant Live. They received a camera for the Point Pleasant Live program. Um, so we went and got that in there, so they go ahead and get that ordered and get that, get that process going for the, for the high school for that. We went ahead and carried over the, uh, child nutrition matching. They sent us a reward for that, so we went ahead and got that set up so they could go ahead and start ordering stuff for the beginning of the school year, um. Where they can get things in the process, get things going and, and we don't miss a beat. And like I said, we're still continuing to work on the, uh, uh, financial statements, it, it's, it's a process. It's step by step, can you do this step, do you get this step finished, so, uh, uh, so I'm still working on those and, uh. And, uh, I got having to the, for the board to review by the last board meeting in September. So we'll have everything ready to go for your review and everything by the, by that last board meeting, unless having submitted by September twenty-ninth to the state department, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
You're welcome, thank you.
The number for hope that helps is three twenty-five, three twenty-five.
All right, five oh one, recommend the board approve the regular business meeting agenda number twenty-five dash zero five of the Mason County Board of Education. August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, at the Mason County Board of Education Office, Point Pleasant, West Virginia, for the purpose of conducting regular business. I'll make a motion, second, this, phone cutter, items to pull. We'll need to, uh, pull seven oh seven, seven oh eight. What I need to add, a nine oh five. Ten oh one. Mr. Burgess. Ms. Cosson.
I wanted to pull twelve hundred.
Ms. Bunker. Mr. Ferguson, anything?
Actually, can I add one, just twelve oh two is to kind of describe or explain what that's needed, because I've been hit a hole up at that, if something the superintendent could touch on what that's a necessary purchase.
Then just to recap, item seven oh seven, seven oh eight, we're gonna have to add a nine oh five, twelve oh one, twelve oh two. I'll favor say aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Seven oh seven, recommend the board approve the transfer of Tabitha Chapman, L D B D I D teacher, School for Success to L B B D D D I D teacher. Mohammed Junior Senior High, job number zero zero one dash zero nine seven dash I, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Cosson, discussion there, the item we're gonna have to amend is to say the effective date, so I'm gonna add the effective date. August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, so we're just adding that date, it's meant to be, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five would be effective date. So I'm gonna make a motion that we add that, do that second, add that. Mr. Burgess, I'm favorite to add that effective date, say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero, so the main motion, again, we just added the date, which will be effective August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I'm favorite say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. I recommend, uh, seven oh eight, recommend the board approve the following substitute teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Elizabeth Siders, Teresa Miller, Lori Loomis Wedge, Dylan Collier, John Robinson, Michael Marrero, Richard Hanley, Helen Lanier, Lois Kincaid. Rose Anna Anthony, Cassie Stamper, Ashley Agers, Brenda Hallman, Laura Anderson, Nancy Finicum, Cora Larissa Mays. Terry Rollins, Paige Lewis, Deanna Stewart, Jeanette Sayer and Nathanae Leese. Motion is, phone cutter, second, Ms. Cosson. We need to, I'm gonna make a motion that we add Jeffrey Fowler. So making a motion, we add Jeffrey Fowler. I'll second, I'm favorite to add Jeffrey Fowler, say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Main motion, we've just added Jeffrey Fowler, so all in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we add item nine oh five. And that item would re, recommend the board approve the placement of Zachary Sayer, Athletic Assistant, job number five zero two dash one six one dash S. Point Pleasant Junior Senior High, effective twenty-five, twenty-six school year, this is an unpaid position. Ms. Bunker, I'm favorite to add that item, say aye, opposed, motion passes five zero, so the main motion now with that item on there, so we'll be voting on that. Zachary Sayer as Athletic Assistant, I'm favorite say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Ten oh one, recommend the board discuss and take possible action on policy number fifty-one thirty-six, personal electronic devices, I'll make a motion. Second, Ms. Bunker, discussion, superintendent.
The original policy, we had, um, Howard Suffer taken a look at, we, you know, interpret, read and interpret law two different ways. You have the orig, the actual version that we are going to be, you're going to vote on, that's, um, the one that has the highlighted areas. Then you also have a document that I've given you that revisions the policy fifty-one thirty-six. Um, I give you involved what, what I've changed and your reasoning that's, the explanation that you're given is not my explanation, that is Howard Suffer's explanation. That is the attorney that looked at this, uh, our policy, um, it's just language, um, replacing personal belongings with backpack. Again, we did explanation of why he feels that we should, they should say backpack, um, including, um, talked about field trips, part of our policy mentioned that. There was a, what says in there that possibly the chaperones could allow them, you know, allow them to use their phones, he's saying that that's still considered instructional time. When you make an exemption, being specific who they made their request to, um, he feels that stretching. Trying to address extracurricular activities, transportation, stretching, that this bill was strictly written to protect instructional, the instructional day. So we took a lot of that language out, so. Right there, and you have, I mean, here is, but here's the, that's how the, that's how our version will be, we took out, um. The extracurricular section, the transportation section, um, violations, the suggestion was that our student code of conduct would address illegal contact and misbehavior. So there was no reason to address that, and it's.
Okay, just to recap, as we remember, or make a motion that we, uh, make these changes. So the, the one is, uh, we originally had students with personal belongings or locker, so we've struck out personal belongings because he's stating that personal belongings could be your pants. There could be several different things that could get us into a lot of different, uh, situations. So he asked, do we strike that, so we're striking personal belongings and it will either, it'll be students, uh, store away with their backpack or locker. So backpack or locker. This will all be one motion. Let's see. Well, it's the exemptions, like I said, that, that goes, uh, request to the building level principal, all that goes to the, at the building level. For the violations, uh, we do have the grace period, which was ten days, but on our previous one, we had nothing that stated what the punishment would be, which our punishment intention was more of a warning. So we need a language in there for that, so the language we'll be adding will be using devices will be prohibited, prohibited during this time. But there will be no detention, modified recess or in-school suspension or any consequence that will impose until the eleventh day. So it's just language of letting us, you're caught, we're just trying to let you, uh, learn, it's more of a warning kind of thing, there's no consequence to that until the eleventh day, so we didn't have that in there. Yes.
You're on the hour, I have a problem with that, I think it's good. Every time we change the policy, does that go back to the eleventh day?
I guess it would just be from the beginning of, so this will be one day, uh. This school year.
Yeah, so we are currently today, what, the fifth day of school, so we have, um, so it would be, there's still no, no kind of consequence until the eleventh day.
Okay, so I said, we, we need to knock that on at eleven more days.
No, no, Howard Suffer actually said in there that this, the bill actually took place, was in effect July ninth, that we didn't even have to give the grace period. So that was something that as a board that you guys wanted to do and offer to the students and families, um, that was his concern. Because with the original bill, they were prohibited, um, altogether, so the grace period was just given as accounting to our students and families. So it doesn't have to start over, because that's ours, that's what we put in there, that's what you guys put in there.
So he's suggesting, on that note. Can you find the term he's suggesting for the grace period?
He says the grace period, the bill does not, that is not in the bill to give a grace period, the actual, um, bill or law went into effect July ninth. The grace period, he felt that we could put in there that we could have, um, less, like a less harsh punishment. But they're still prohibited from using their phones, because that's what the bill put in place, the state put in place, that the phones were prohibited. Um, but we could, as you as a board could say, we could offer less punishment or less consequence during grace period, but they're still prohibited from using the phone.
Problem was we just worded grace period, we didn't say any consequence.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we're gonna add, uh, something to that, about less punishment?
We left the grace period in there, but we could, using devices will still, will be prohibited during this time, we're not saying that during this grace period that students are allowed to use their devices. He said that the law prohibits that, we just need to be more specific on what we're doing during this grace period.
Plus the added no detention, modified recess, I assess any consequence will be imposed, we will.
Yes, yes. Yes, yeah, the, the phone could be confiscated, but we cannot be giving kids any kind of consequence or fitting anything into weakness or doing any kind of discipline referral.
Totally.
Yeah.
Then on the first offense, which will go both with elementary and middle school, uh, the device will be confiscated, first we had, uh, and returned to parent regarding. He said we needed to change that and that the parent may retrieve the device at the end of the day, because it's not our job to track them down and return it, we said it would be a mess. Yeah, so we're just taking, uh, return to parent guarding and we don't, he said you don't need no conference, uh, with the parent at the first offense either, he said that's all they're gonna get done. So the first offense will just read that the device will be confiscated and the parent may retrieve at the end of the school day. Then the second offense is the same thing, parent will, may retrieve the device at the end of the school day. Third offense, they may retrieve it at the end of the school day. And let's see, that's what nobody.
And that's for elementary, yeah.
Detention.
Yeah, two days.
Then it's, when it gets to subsequent, that's where the conference details needs to be, uh, held, so we'll be adding that. Okay. Oh, and also we had a person who discovers a student using the PED violation, this policy is required to report violation to the building principal. A person could be a student, he said you don't need students going in and doing all that, so we've changed student to employee. That would be. No, so that's why, he said change the person, said employee.
I'll second.
Yeah, I think, is that all the changes? You guys on that? All right, so we have motion, Ms. Bunker, second, I'm favorite the.
We're voting on just adding this or we're back to voting on the whole?
Just adding these changes, that, that will do the main motion. So this is just changing the changes and getting it on the table, so I'm favorite say, aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. So the main motion, which will, uh, have all these changes, that's what we're voting on now, so I'm favorite the main motion, so they aye, or the, aye, opposed. Motion passes four zero, or four one, with Ms. Cosson saying that, or voting that. All right, brings us to. Twelve oh one, recommend the board approve the purchase of two fifteen-ton unitary split system indoor units. One seven point five ton unitary split system indoor unit, two fifteen-ton unitary split system outdoor units and one seven and a half ton unit. To replace the cooling units at the central office from Trane Technologies. At the cost of forty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars, the county funds will be funding stores. Ms. Cosson, I'll second, discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't know if we could get before, I don't want to vote on this until I get, I guess, an H V A C update for school buildings. Like, I know we still had some issues with some of our buildings not having air and then of course I was hit up like crazy because it looks like, hey, we're buying new units from the board office and schools are still out. So I just didn't, I don't want to vote on this unless, until I have like an update on where we're at, school building wise, I guess.
Um, I can give you, so Roosevelt Trains is working on the unit of Roosevelt, um, our technicians were unable to fix. Our technicians were unable to fix that, so Train has actually been working on that unit out there. Parts have been ordered, that was as of last week. And there are three units right now, one ordered from the junior high, Point Pleasant, one ordered for the high school, and one ordered for the kitchen. And we've had the WDE in Hanan and at New Haven checking humidity levels. We know the needs there for humidity sensors, those kinds of things. So those are the pressing issues that I've been made aware of. Other than that, I don't have updates for the other schools, unless I mix up something.
But everything, to be clear, parts have been ordered, units have been ordered for all of our school buildings that are having issues.
Yes. Train, I asked Cameron actually last week about Roosevelt, and he's had Train out there looking at that unit, and they ordered parts for it. And we expect that to be fixed within the next week or two, as soon as they get those parts in. And new units have been ordered for the high school, a couple of different places up there. What we're running into, some of these units are twenty plus years old, just like the unit here at the board office. Parts, we can't order parts for it, so it's actually my end of the office. So my office has been about eighty two for the last two months. So we've done everything we can try to get some data for you.
Are there any more discussion? All favor say aye. Owe's motion passes five zero. Twelve oh two, recommend the board approve the purchase of a twenty two, twenty twenty two GMC Terrain to be purchased from John Seiford Winkin at the cost of twenty seven thousand dollars. This purchase is for the safety director's use. County's funds will be the funding source. Motion, Miss Cawson. I'll second. Discussion.
I just wanted, like I said earlier, just to kind of explain to people watching, or I just, I'm also, I'm sure all of you have gotten some messages, because we hear, well, that can pay for a part-time staff, or, you know, things like that. So just, can you explain why it's actually needed?
So, Mr. Chapman is here, but as a safety director, he has equipment. He's, has trauma kits, he has weapons. He has so many things that he has to, that he needs to have in his possession. So when we think about him leaving here and going to a high school, there's a perpetrator, or something going on, he needs to have access to his equipment. If there's a bus accident, he's our first responder. He's gonna be able to get to our students before anybody. If something happens at Leon, he's gonna be the first person to be on side. He does not want to put certain weapons and things in a county car, or, you know, so this vehicle will be marked. It will be marked for Mason County, you know, school's security. He will be able to put everything that he needs to make sure he's a first responder, that he can show up as law enforcement. Also, if our campuses are shut down due to something happening, we have to be, we have to have either crisis team on our back, evolve Train, alive, but they won't even let any of us on campus. So he would be the person that would be there, be allowed on campus. So we felt that it was impossible to put that burden on him without making sure he has the equipment and, and the, the ability to actually truly serve as our first responder and security director at the county, so.
No further discussion. All favor say aye. Owe's motion passes five zero. All right, fifteen oh one, recommend the board adjourn the regular business meeting agenda number twenty five dash zero five. It's twenty six, twenty twenty five, Mason County Board of Education, held the Mason County Board of Education Office, Point Pleasant, West Virginia. I heard Mr. Shaver. No, Shaver. Second, Miss Bunker. All favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Six fifty seven. Bye-bye, Dan.